What's going around right now is the Eaton Elementary shared decision making team minutes. We have our second meeting tomorrow, so these minutes have not yet been approved. I expect they will be aside from the occasional typo, grammar, spelling, et cetera. We typically meet five times a year and subcommittee things as needed. So for a typical member, you might meet five times and some committee another five times. I'd like to start by saying last year we visited... Improving our cafeteria experience for our students was our big goal last year. We were looking at the quantity, quality, price of the food. We were looking at the physical environment of the cafeteria at Eaton Elementary, and we were looking at our student conduct. Last year, we visited nine cafeterias in five different school districts. We actually took digital pictures of the food the students were eating, their lunches, and when we compared everything for the price we were charging, we found that there was no significant difference in Eaton Elementary lunch and a lunch in Frontier, Lake Shore, Amber, Northtown, et cetera. We looked at the physical setting of our cafeteria as compared to some of the other cafeterias, and although we have some hopes, we understand that in budget times, this is going to depend on competition for money, and that's going to go through safety and welfare, and we are going to take a backseat for that for a while. We concentrated on student conduct, and I came up with the three basic rules for the cafeteria: stay in your seat, use your insight, and always show respect. And as you'll see in our notes, we're reviewing that at this next shared decision-making team meeting tomorrow. And we have done an informal survey. We have that back from our faculty and staff. We're looking at that. We are also looking at, if you looked at item number four, accelerated reader program, which kind of fits in with what our GLP friends were saying about encouraging students to read at home. This is a computer-based program where students can prove what they read by virtue of taking the quiz. It's used in many school districts in Western New York. We hit an online conference with a rep from that company, and our next move is to take the subcommittee to visit the school that actually uses it and review of the cafeterias, I said. And then we have a subcommittee working on improving the aesthetics around the school, making it look more like an elementary school. As I said, our next meeting is tomorrow, and they are open to the public. All shared decision-making teams are open to the public as we are technically in our form of education. They are meetings held in public, but not necessarily with public participation. So, questions? And Mr. Seri, you're going to ask me if I need anything. Just send small, unmarked bills.
Hello, I'm Lauren Beasley. This is Sarah Rappert with the Elementary Coach here at the new school, shared decision-making team. We meet monthly, which I'm realizing now is too often. I didn't know we could do every other.
So get us that standard.
Some of the things that we've accomplished over the recent years include, but certainly are not limited to, after-school sub-program where the kids who stay after for sports, whether it's practice or an evening sporting event that they can't go home in between, musical rehearsal, for whatever reason they have to stay. It gives them a healthier alternative. They preorder their sub at lunch through the food service at the reduced prices, which is, from what I understand, real cheap. It's like about sixty for a half a sub. And then they pick it up after school between 2:15 and 2:30, and it's a great alternative to the vending machine. Kids enjoy starving after school and want some tea. Can't make the subway. Something else that we've done is restructure the eligibility policy that we have at the high school for students who are deemed ineligible because of their grades. We've worked very hard with Lucinda Karstedt and Dan Berman to streamline this process and put it online. And so now the teachers can go onto Power School and actually update their students' progress on a weekly basis. The biggest advantage to that is that every teacher has access to every student's progress, and they can monitor their own students. And it's, you know, we still have a few things to work on, but for the most part, it's working very smoothly, so.
Also, each year, we help the administration review the code of conduct, and that's something that, right now, we're also working to make sure that we are within that dignity for all students policy that was discussed by GLP. And also, in trying to work with and support the board's goals that were put out, we took an interest in improving the communication piece that was discussed. And we were able to work again with Lucinda and Dan in updating the district website. I'm sure most of you have noticed that since Christmas break, the website hasn't updated. We're trying to make it a more user-friendly place, and we continue to give suggestions on how to get that important information to those who visit our site. We found that although the information was available, it wasn't always easy to find. And we believe that the changes that have been made create a more user-friendly site. And of course, once again, it's still a work in progress. So we've still, since it's been up and running since January, been meeting with technology and asking faculty members for their input on some changes. Our team is also trying to find creative and cost-effective ways to help support the board's goals of becoming a top-10 school district and achieving mastery level by looking at the enrichment opportunities for our students, especially at the middle school level.
And if there's anything we need from you, we will let you know.
Hi, I'm Nicole Bauer, and I'm facilitating the district shared decision-making team. I too have handouts. I am going to ask for your participation as well. But first, I'm going to enjoy my hands up here. The focus of the district shared decision-making team has become one of positive PR and strengthening the connection between the community and the school, which is something I very strongly believe in. My children's book school here, I live here. It's a great district, and we need to continue to build that connection. We have asked each building in the district to increase their submissions to sources such as the Amber Sun and the district newsletter to get the word out there about the great things that are happening in our district. Another idea that we have come up with at the district shared decision-making team is we have spoken with several local businesses. They have mostly agreed to display bulletin boards for us, which we have agreed to maintain and update regularly, where we will post information about happenings at the school, things related to our students, just various sources of information, so that when you are waiting for your food at EDC Food and Pizza or checking out at the grocery store, these things will be in your face and speak so that you would know exactly what's happening in our district. The bulletin boards are going to be part of our Raiders Respond Day, which is coming up in May, and that's when I'm going to ask for your help. Raiders Respond is a major undertaking of the district shared decision-making team. It's a day of community service where our students pre-K through 12th grade, that's what they stay up, spend the day out in the community completing various projects. We're willing to perform projects at various venues, from public grounds to businesses to private residences. And we are looking to move Raiders Respond from a day of community service to a philosophy in our district where we have events that take place throughout the year that we would turn Raiders Respond projects so that it's not just one day of upholding and building connections in the community. It would be a year-long philosophy. So that is where I'm going to ask for your help. I have brought flyers for Raiders Respond. I'm going to pass them out to you, and hopefully you can help us to solicit some more projects to make this day even bigger and better. So there you go. I'll start with two, and if you need more, three. All right. And you can get these back to our time school. And we'll get you right off the list. All right, we look forward to hearing from you. You're welcome.
And this is the next report. Destiny in the library is...
Good evening. My name is Sandy Potts. This is Vanessa Zoell, and we are responsible for library and information literacy instruction for the district grades K through six. Tonight, we will tell you a little bit about who we are, what we do, and show you one of our newest tools to provide each student the skills necessary to succeed in the 21st century. While Vanessa's setting up our demonstration, let me share a little bit about ourselves and our programs. Vanessa, in 1996, graduated the University of Buffalo Library Science Program, joined the district in 1998, and has provided library and information skills instruction to students in grades three through six for the past 13 years. Vanessa teaches in both fixed and flexible blocks, and this allows her to maximize opportunities to work collaboratively with teachers in providing joint instruction in content area, technology integration, and library information skills so critical to accessing and evaluating resources in the production of research projects, document-based questions, and other tasks that require critical thinking analysis. Additionally, her work at Eaton Elementary supports literacy by providing bookshelf instruction and book talk to new titles to pique students' interest in picking up a new read. She manages a collection of over 9,000 titles for both teachers and students. I'm a 2001 graduate of the Syracuse University Library and Information Science Program. I've worked part-time for the district for just over 14 years at the GLP. I hold a master's level reading special certification from Canisius, and I currently teach an integrated program of library and computer information literacy skills for kindergarten, version second grade. My focus is to lay the foundation in library and information literacy skills using print and electronic resources. Additionally, I concentrate on developing questioning skills and basic skill sets for beginning the research process. What are the different reference tools? What task does each one do best? Can I find these tools in both print and electronic formats? How do I plan to answer my questions about a topic? I teach 15 sections of library and 15 of computers to approximately 300 students a week, and I manage a collection of over 6,000 titles for staff and students at the GLP. Professionally trained librarians have always been in the business of locating, evaluating, vetting, and providing access to high-quality materials and teaching patrons how to use these resources. In years gone by, this was a relatively straightforward task. Go to those trusted names: Britannica, Time, Colliers, Newsweek, Compton. Those reputations were built on reliability and authenticity of their products. You pay one standard price for a set of materials, put those products on reserve in the lock reference section, and then teach students how to do magazine and encyclopedia citations. Fast forward to 2012. Librarians are still your go-to people for resources, but today, publishing is open to everybody. Anyone can and does publish readily accessible information, whether or not the information is worthwhile or useful. Somehow, I doubt Snooki's tweets would have ever reached the printed word in the days of Compton and Britannica. There are literally millions of words published daily on full-scale topics: their blogs, wikis, prez, TED Talks, Tumblr, teachers' websites, in addition to websites, directories, and databases. Today's librarian works side by side with patrons to shift through the growing mound of information to sort out what's relevant, reliable, and authentic, and what is distorted, misrepresented, or simply trash. Complicating this process is that while years ago, you could count on Newsweek or Britannica remaining in the lock reference section for you to use, modern electronic resources are in constant flux as to pricing and accessibility. The speed with which information changes or updates is staggering, as is the lightning pace with which information companies are being bought and sold. Resources can literally be here today and gone tomorrow. As professionals, Vanessa and I are constantly attending library and technology conferences and workshops to try and keep pace with the resources that will support our teachers and students in the transition to core curriculum and 21st century learning. Daily, we search for better ways to deliver these resources to students and staff. One of these resources that we are delighted to share with you tonight is our Destiny library system, purchased by the district for all three libraries in April 2010. No longer are teachers and students limited to accessing materials by the hour of the day or their geographic location. Are you ready, Vanessa? Okay, let's take a test drive.
We have about a year and a half of school months. Let me just leave you a really quick overview of Destiny Quest. And students can access it, teachers can access it through the district page under Web Resources on the left-hand side here. And for the sake of this presentation, since I'm going to start my class because I'm running time constraint, I'm going to demonstrate the Eaton Elementary site. And Sandy and I, Mrs. Potts and I, were presented with a different interface for Destiny Quest. Destiny Quest is web based that allows all students and the patrons and teachers to access our library catalog online. That's okay, I'll go through the elementary site. Students can access it through the web resources or through the elementary site. And I have students go through the elementary page.
Will the student access it outside of the room?
Yes, that's the beauty of this web base. In the past, the students could only access their catalog from school. But now, they can access it from home. They can renew library materials. They can hold library materials. You know, they can be remembering to redo their library materials on a vacation in Disney World, and they can... So, yeah, well...
What did the old system look like?
I'm sorry? What did the, what was the old system like? Well, the old system, you just, you couldn't really, you couldn't renew library materials. You couldn't...
I couldn't see what was in your library.
Right, all the... Yeah, together, all tied together. So... April 2010, all of our three library collections merged, so then students can look across all collections and see what was available. There are limiters, of course. We can see more than what the students can see. Yeah, there's a feature that comes up for... On the left-hand side is where the students decide. On the left-hand side is the library page. And on there, this is the Destiny Quest page. And this is the interface for primary building and the interface for the elementary building. For the high school, it's a different look. And Mrs. Potts and I chose this look because it was very friendly for the children. At the top up here is a menu item. You can come home. There's Money Code, where the students would access their account. This is the only place where they can hold library materials and they can renew their library materials. They have to log in. So if you don't log in, right now, on the top, right here on the side, you have Log In as a Guest. And they can browse the collection as a guest, but until they want to hold the material or they want to look over their own accounts, they have to log in. And that login feature is up at the top up here. For Mrs. Potts's library, she has a visual search up here. And Mrs., I don't really have much of a visual search. I have the students putting keyword searching, but because she has an younger audience, she has categories for her patrons, and they would click on that category. It would call up those books under that category. We have animals, endangered species. I don't know what your others are. So, and I just want to make sure they're all... So, a general search. So Common Core learning standards. All students need to differentiate through the genres. You have to know the genre, so the teachers ask kids to check out a book on a very specific genre. So here's where you would perform all of your searches. And one very popular search at the beginning of the year to assign students is mystery fiction. It's not case-sensitive, it's selling-sensitive. You can perform searches on subjects, authors, titles, and people, and it doesn't matter what, first name or last name.
Do you get a screen of what the search terms they've been looking for?
Yes, I do. The number one search means the keyword searching? Is mystery fiction. Number two is, now you're a wimpy kid. Number three is, add kitty. And number four is, hundred games. And I do clear out the searches because sometimes kids do put in some interesting search terms, and I clear the cache on that. So right now, it's telling us we have 426 results. And this is the best part, is it shows the pictures for the kids. I'm going to move this window over because I don't want to hear that. Well, all right. So on the left-hand side are your limiters. And this 426 titles is a lot for perhaps a fourth grader to go through. So I recommend on the left-hand side, tell them to narrow their search results. On the left-hand side, you have these filters, and you can filter out materials that are at a higher reading level. So for somebody who's in fourth grade, your highest book is almost a ninth-grade reading level. You can narrow that down to say some things, you know, like fifth grade if they want to be challenged. And then the lowest, the book with the lowest reading is a first-grade reading level, almost halfway through first grade. So you can raise that up if you want. And this is really nice because for kids who are challenged by reading or reluctant readers... And you can, so somebody who's in fourth grade wants to keep it at roughly a third-grade reading level, you can apply that. And then this way, now they have 185 titles, and this is showing the first-time results. Another really popular number is, the kids ask me all the time, is they want to go up to 100 pages long. So on the left-hand side... So on the left-hand side, you can also, again, I have all these mystery fiction titles, 31 pages, which is not going to jive with the picture. So they're going to want at least 100 pages. So you can bring up to about 100 pages there, and then you can bring it down to 375 pages to say at least, you know, choices of 200. And then you can apply that. And now you're working with 83 book books to search about. I'm a natural here.
Such as that a teacher bin reserved a class when you appear in that student class, you go over and look in?
Can. On back on the homepage, there's a resource list that teachers could put a list of titles that they wanted to. I can go back to that just a second. So if you hover over each, or mouse over each book cover, you can add those books that you want to your list. You can actually see it being dropped over here into the list. It'll create a bibliography or titles for the kids. The list is really nice, especially the old, not so much... It'll create, it'll generate a bibliography, especially if kids are doing a research project and each and each, and they know they've used four books. It'll generate it in alphabetical order to be ready to go, which is really nice. This is the, right now, we only have one looking at this. If you go back to Quest Home here, the resource list array here, for example, we have folks down around the world, and a teacher could add her, his list that they want to, or recommended reading. I have some GLP that are subject-specific, but we were updating our science curriculum. I have resource lists where the teachers can go through, and they can see everything that I've got on weather as one of the units we do in kindergarten. It's right there on the front page. And if you look at it, you can see what's there. Two other features I'm just going to show you, and I'm going to stop here. But after you generate a list of, you search the library collection for library titles, you can go through websites, and it creates a path of websites that are reviewed. They're accurate, reviewed by librarians. And that's under here, under Websites here. And it'll give you websites that kids can look at without having to go onto Google. You get lost through the advertisements. And Google is fine every now and then for kids in grade three through six. This is a nice site to go to. And then over here is OneSearch. OneSearch is a really nice feature because it'll access all of our databases that we have that we get through the district, but you don't have to type in a password. It's just pretty nice. So if I, I'm doing dogs just right now to go across the board here. So OneSearch will tap into these databases that we have at least in the elementary building. The high school is different, so they have different databases. And it'll call up all the online databases. No password is required. And then the kids can go through and search for the one that they need. And we have a lot of databases. And that's a great, I find that to be a nice feature. What's really nice here, what's really nice about that too is you can drop the websites, and you can drop your web search. If you find an article or you find a website, if your student's logged in, they can drop those in there, and they can save them for later so they can look at them when you're doing your search. On the left-hand side, I'm going to tell you if you wanted to search down by these newspapers, newspapers, and articles. I think I better stop there because Sandy has some PowerPoint to present here. Normally, I spell whole classes here. But in order for students to log in, it's up in here. And the login is just like they would at a computer. Yes, they do. So if they were at home, this is the login. It's just like on any computer in the district. They would have to use their first name, last name, four digits, and then their password. And from that point on, they would get, they could renew their library books, and they can hold library materials. And that's the worst effective path for students. Why don't you do your questions? Yeah, I'm sorry, let's say, because we can't put the demo. Any questions?
I have more general questions. Is this any library management systems? And this takes care of the total situation tracking?
Absolutely, right. Yes. Let me show you the look for the high school. This is what, this is the look for the high school. This is what they have. And this is what Mr. Kedmore chose. And it's very clean looking, it's advertised in print. But under, here, in the location of your search, you can limit, you can search across all of our three schools. And, you know, teachers are looking for specific books. Somebody came and asked me for an elementary school book, and I looked in Mrs. Potts's collection, and I found the book there. But it can generate a lot of, yes, it can generate monthly reports on how many students have checked out books, classroom totals. I do that every month for the kids in our school. I have to lie to show you that. There's a whole host of report features. You can, your report features by, I do, I routinely do this time of year because I'm starting to generate my lists for ordering over the summer. As I look at age, you can select the ageier collection by the different, by the different sections. You can generate a list of books that have not been checked out in the last five years. And all our inventory stuff goes through, goes through, because there's a module that all those... You can do top homerooms, you can do top students with checkouts.
Is there capability tied in to other systems like County Council or something?
I don't think so. Or to be more tied in with, maybe can't walk through this. With other schools, but not with, not the county. Yeah, but that's not like, that's very, not the Buffalo, not the county. But other schools, yeah. Thanks. Is that all right? Sure. All right. This is a sample task that will be expected of eighth-grade ELA students after the state's state information work at home in two years. I received this from a Bozies trainer, three, four grade last spring. And if you look it over carefully, I mean, it's just absolutely incredible what they're going to be anticipating our students to do. It kind of took my breath away the first time I saw it. But rather than take up any more time tonight, we're distributing some fact sheets citing a massive body of research that definitively demonstrates the connection between student achievement and fully funded, fully staffed libraries. Links to all the studies I used are provided in quotes and recommendations from both the Regents Advisory Council on Libraries and the Executive Summer of New York Comprehensive Center report commissioned by the Regents to find out what impact libraries have on the Regents' reform agenda, the changes that are accompanying the shift to Common Core and Race to the Top. Both of these groups concluded that fully funded and staffed libraries in all New York State buildings are essential to helping students meet these new rigorous standards. I wish to leave you with this last slide. And this quote from the Buffalo News, January 12th article on the Williamsville budget meeting of that day. After some lengthy and difficult... "After some lengthy and difficult discussions, the Williamsville School Board members said Tuesday that they want the superintendent to spare whole-day kindergarten, school libraries, foreign language classes, and alternative education cuts." The superintendent Scott Marslaw commented, "We have four programs that are relatively essential to the Williamsville school system." And one of our stated board goals is to be in the top five Erie County schools by 2015. "As Eden's community of people tasked with helping our students thrive in the 24th century and meeting its challenges head-on, we ask that we consider the impact of libraries on student achievement as we move forward together to reaching all of our goals." We want to thank you very much for the opportunity to share with you this evening, and thank you for your support and helping us attain destiny, because it has been a wonderful, wonderful tool of excellence.
Alright, we're getting very long with presentations. We have our representatives of our inquiry team, which are teams that are working at the achievement. The chief of the district identified through Race to the Top, as well as our Action Plan. And we'll start off with a learning sheet, just a breath. You may have your packets, board members, or your spot. Copies from some of the groups, and some may bring their own, just a breath.
Yeah, I think you have the head well. I'm leading up the Yellins, and eight members on our team, and we're being led by Danny Adams and Bosse's. He's our trainer and our facilitator. All the inquiry teams are going to be based on the book written by data by St. Doyle. It's a great reading if you're looking for something to do. Bottom line is, our first couple meetings, we met and trained on the process itself. And overall, it's a three-phase process to identify your students, move your students, and then ultimately move the system. Our team had some discussions, and we decided that our focus group was going to be any student who scored within 10 scale points of achieving a level three at the New York State ELA assessment. And they gave us a total of 29 students in our target group, 13 seventh grade, 16 and eighth grade. We gathered data and looked into the school as a whole, and then we narrowed it down to our target students, and we used our S E E assessment data, our input data, teacher and classroom anecdotal records, and classroom assessment data. And based on that data review, at this point, we have picked the following performance indicators for grade seven that need our extra attention, literary elements, applied versus stated facts, facts and ideas from multiple choices, vocabulary, and organization of informational passages, that was the area of concern there. For eighth graders, we narrowed it down to literary elements, what devices and others use of language to create images. So that's going to be our focus areas overall, but most of the focus on those 29 kids and how they were. At the end of our last meeting, we decided that we needed to develop some short assessment tools that will allow the teachers to gather more meaningful feedback on those performance indicators. So we're in the process of doing that right now. And in the future, we will continue our discussion on how the outcome of more will impact our teaching, and what we're doing in classroom every day. We'll continue our discussion on how to improve our AIS and RTI services at the, especially at the junior high school level, which you've heard me say in the past is about area to serve the mind, and still is, and we need to get that out of the stuff. And that's where we're at at this point, it's been pretty good so far. We've had some pretty, pretty good discussions and debates about where we're at, and where we're moving. We're excited to move that, that's starting to happen. Presenting your other questions.
Who's the actual goal of the meeting?
It's the action plan to improve our seventh and eighth-grade ELA scores.
By a certain amount, by a certain amount of time?
Yes. So if everybody's focusing on those, really the high-level tools, that it'd probably be easier to move, hopefully, based on what we're doing, and also that that would get us to that safety goal, increase our listening.
What's my point, 10 points?
Just 10 points. They, they score it based on, the cutoff points for level three were, I think seventh grade was 662, based on the scale that they use, and eighth grade was 660, so anybody that felt any 10 points on that.
I'm in charge of the mastery inquiry team. Mastery, mastery is defined as fours on the New York State assessments, ELA and math in grades three through eight, and 85 and above on the New York State Regents. This was, the mind was from our first meeting. And you see the members of the team representing all the buildings in the district, all the grade levels. Our facilitator was Eric Wheeler from Bosse's. We have another meeting to be scheduled early March. And if you look down at the minutes that you fast around, there's two basic pushes we have going on. One is developing interim assessments. And interim assessments are those assessments that are used to ascertain where you're at, so you don't have to wait till you get to the end-of-the-year test to find out that you're not meeting your level of expectation in a certain area. And from my perspective as principal, to do a gap analysis of where we are in regards to the other school districts in Erie County to ascertain where we should be applying the interim assessments. We, or some people call it zap the gap. Now, this is, we have this printout, of course, we have this information. We are trying to find out where the, where our greatest opportunity for growth is as compared to other schools in Erie County. Certainly, if an item was poorly constructed, and everybody did poorly on it, then it is what it is. On the other hand, if an item was maybe misleading to the students, or just over the student's level of ability, and all of Erie County did poorly on that item, again, it is what it is. If we find an area where all of Erie County was successful, and we weren't, there's an area for great potential growth. Of course, we're in the confines of time. If Lyndsay Ruff wants to increase the time he wants to work on the power play, he can have the fellow stay ten or fifteen minutes extra. We have a finite amount of time, and one of the worries is, you put more time in on something else, you suffer similar else. We will find out, but right now our two big pushes are on the interim assessments and gap analysis. Any questions about our mastery inquiry? This does actually answer the action plan of improving mastery on the New York State tests and Regents' tests. And while I have your attention, I just wanted to let you know we are in the midst of doing our morning prep classes for the ELA preparation in grades three through six. We'll be doing three weeks, twice a week, shortly after the mid-winter recess. And then we're going to follow that up with three weeks, six sessions in math as well. These are going home with our students tomorrow, and they'll be a global connect call, so some student doesn't forget to give it to their mom or dad.
Students chosen to participate, as far as everyone else?
Now, we only had a limited number of facilitators, and so the teachers had to do, I guess you'd say, in essence, triage to decide. We decided 12 students per session per facilitator. And so I have about three sessions in each subject in almost every grade, and so we're targeting 36 students. And 12, we are figures on the high side for the needs of these particular students. If we only get of our 36 applications there, we only get on average a 10 per session, that's not a bad thing. But in the past, we tried to target all students, including high-end students, we simply don't have room for that. Any questions?
Good evening, I represent you, kindergarten through third grade math inquiry team. The team is composed of my son, facilitator, our co-facilitator is Captain Moses from Bosse's. Kindergarten representative is Carol Stumpf, and first grade representative Catherine DeMurray, we met both of them this evening. Our seventh grade representative is Erin Radke, third grade is Kristen McTie, our AIS rep is Carl Walker, and our special education representative is Captain Borowitz. This team is working out focusing on reviewing multiple sources to make database instructional decisions to increase student achievement, as is measured on the New York State Third Grade Math Assessment. We've had one meeting, we're planning our next meeting for early to mid-March. In the first meeting, we reviewed, took a look at multiple data sources, we took a look at what that means to us, and what kind of information can derive from that. That just provided us the foundation as a team, learn how to take a look at data and understand it, so that we can make good decisions, and not just make guesses on what we need to do to increase our achievement in this particular area. Our next meeting is going to focus on analyzing the third grade New York State Math Assessment data as we're blessed to come to Herne, through second grade AIMS Web Math data. The focus of the study will be reviewing targeted areas of need at third grade, and coordinating it to the skill area assessed kindergarten through second grade. The team will also utilize the New York State, the new Common Core learning standards as a basis for planning instructional shifts. The information gap that will help be translated to the kindergarten third grade faculty to make instructional adjustments to increase student achievement. So we are just beginning our work, it's a lot of work, it's exciting, and we're very glad that we have also the expertise from Bosse's to be able to help guys through this process. Any questions?
Okay, my inquiry team is the special education inquiry team. And we were looking at students with disabilities, grades three through eight, in assessment of the ELA and math, focused on the ELA. My team was basically my staff, we have Joan Weiss, Sammy Lackey, Christine Dernger, Jack Dorfante, Kim Angino, Amy Steger, up at this building, Sean Paul, Christina Hay, Chris Palas, and we adopted Nicole Hour, who is our reading specialist, that works with our students up here. We've met once, our facilitator is Tracy Ray. And what we did is we looked at the three-through-eight assessments of the general population, and then we were able to get the data from our students with disabilities in three-through-eight. So we looked at the different things and pulled out the performance indicators, where generally, overall, we saw that our students missed the same things as the general population, but there's two areas that we found key that we needed to focus on more. And that was informational text and literary elements. So what we did is, we kind of looked at it a little different than the other inquiry teams. We know our kids, we have diagnostic testing to back up our kids, because often students with disabilities, every three years, this testing, and we have a full diagnostic rate. So we looked at, what are we going to do as educators to change what we're doing to help students? So the job that our staff has given when they were to leave after this meeting was to bring back with us examples of lessons or assessments of informational text, which is, there's realistic nonfiction, the real thing. And that lines with the Common Core learning standards. So they were going to bring back, what are we doing in our resource room, our consultant teacher Miles, with our students, bring it back, and homework writing, all that, and then we'll get together, like, that we've only had one meeting. Our second meeting is scheduled for February 28th. But I really like the concept of that we're looking at what we can do as educators instead of what's you doing wrong. We know, we have a red act, we know we have to deal with it, but we got to change what we're doing. So that's what our team is doing. Any questions? Okay.
I am overseeing the man's grade seven, the A.I.S. inquiry team. My team consists of Alice Fico, Tom Waltz, Amy Corner, Sterling Necker, Kristen Fuzia, and Gavin Gro. My team facilitator from Bosse's is Captain Moses, the same one that is working with Danielle. We look at two O's so far. Our first meeting, the members were trained on the inquiry team process, and the team identified the data gaps from the 2009, 2010, 2011 math assessments. The team compared the district rates of success to the Eden's gaps to Erie to Bosse's. And after we identified those, that was the end of our first meeting. We meet again on the 27th, where the team identified the math components in which our students were deficient, which is in the handout that you have in front of you. We'll show you the topics that our students are deficient in. We have compiled an assessment test, which is being given this week. They will be scored next week. And when we meet again on the 27th, which is our next meeting, we will assess our assessments test that we paid this week. Results of the first assessment will give us our target group, and we will start working with the target group, the components in which they are deficient, either through our AIS program, through the regular math classes, or through after-school activities. We will be continuing giving these committee assessments throughout the remainder of the school year, and working on the math components in which we know that our students are deficient in right now, at this time, to help them with the state assessments coming up this year. So our next meeting is on the 27th, in which we will review our first committee assessment that we've given and start working on the components that we know that the students are deficient right now. So any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to the second part of the, I don't know if you have one other goal, go to the, oh, committee.
Good evening, I am Kirsten Philin, I'm the junior teacher at the high school, and this was Mrs. Van Alst, she's a class teacher. We are both co-chairs of the Languages Other Than English Committee, the Law Committee. The Law Committee was formed in order to act upon District Code Number Two, and investigate the law operating through the Eastern Soldier's League, with a special focus on immersion and enrichment opportunities at the elementary school. In accordance with the Administrative Action Plan, the committee consists of all law teachers, elementary school principal Mr. Schaefer, and student representatives at the senior high level from all three languages. Elementary teachers have been involved in discussions, in discussions, and we would like to move on to important parents in the committee. We would both like to know from the board whether it has specific suggestions for the selection process of parent numbers. We had thought about putting a notice in the parent newsletter, and then making a random selection from the attributes. The Law Committee investigated the concepts of early immersion and enrichment with regards to a language instruction. Early immersion is a method of teaching and learning a foreign language. It entails having a student undergo instruction in a foreign language, generally starting by age five or six. Usually, this method entails having the student learn all, or at least the majority of, is a regular subject matter, such as mathematics or science via the foreign language being taught. Enrichment, would provide opportunities to enhance a path to the curriculum at an early age. Foreign language and culture would be introduced through a variety of instructional methods and activities. Teachers like at Eden Elementary School have been contacted to have input in the enrichment opportunity development process. Suggestions have included the provision of materials such as activity kits, posters, and technology-based introduction to foreign language. Elementary students could also be enriched by participating in a foreign language. Elementary students could also be enriched by participating in a foreign language day created around holiday celebrations, for instance, involving a variety of activities in foreign language and culture from other countries. However, the elementary school teachers and principals have stressed the immense time constraints they are under in order to meet the state, also the board, BLA, and math goals. One option to circumvent a time out of instructional days would be the involvement of older law students from the junior senior high school in a voluntary after-school enrichment activity or program at the elementary school. We were told that a similar program was run by TTA several years ago.
Our committee has also been able to analyze the law survey sent out to district students and parents. The survey was on the school website for one week in October. All law classes had the opportunity to respond during class. Parents received letters in a local that called encouraging them to respond. Our review of the survey comments made several trends apparent. The largest trend is that students and parents want to maintain the current foreign language offerings, French, German, and Spanish. An example comment is, "I do not believe that a change in current foreign language is necessary. I believe that any student that wishes to pursue an alternate foreign language may do so without the guidance of the school." French, German, and Spanish have been a serious part of our language disquietances, and has been taken by generations to have been passed down to our current generation to explore for themselves. If the board does see a fit that we incorporate alternate languages, they should be not essential and available as elective. Another trend was that comments addressed the positive experience students currently have within their law classes. Another example comment is, "The present law language offerings more than adequately satisfy the regions' diploma requirements, as well as preparing students for college-level language courses. The selection of German, French, and Spanish, the majority of the demographic spectrum counted in our area, and are consistent with the mainstream geological background. The district is blessed with excellent high school language teachers, one who was recently awarded Teacher of the Year. I feel quite strongly that nothing will be needed to tamper with the present program." A third trend focused toward the addition of new language offerings in addition to our current offerings. An example comment is, "I don't disagree with adding an additional language, but not at the expense of any other language already offered. The teachers and programs are excellent and would be ashamed to see any part of it taken away." Our future focus includes an analysis of the advanced reduced diplomas afforded to the law offerings at the junior high school, a study of language offerings in upper-tier county school districts, a detailed breakdown of the survey results, additional discussion of enrichment opportunities at the elementary school, involvement of additional community members, specifically parents, and investigation of the abandoned additional instruction languages at the elementary level.
Okay, I'm gonna give you a brief overview of the grant for the twelve thirteen budget. Currently, the expenditure budget is seventy-five million, two hundred forty-seven, eight hundred ninety-three dollars. Okay, this is point three one percent, eighty thousand, three hundred twenty-one dollars more than the eleven twelve budget. Zero-based budgeting, two further direction of the board. It's the F K from the Educational Jobs Fund grant, we're getting back to the job fund budget, increasing it by five, about five hundred forty-two thousand dollars. In two thousand eleven, twelve, the tax levy increased by two hundred thousand, three hundred twenty-eight dollars, or one point six two percent over the ten eleven levy. For twelve, the twelve thirteen budget, the budget tax levy increases to two percent over the eleven twelve, levy transferred from two hundred fifty thousand, seven hundred seventy-two dollars. The revenue estimates we used includes a two percent increase in the tax levy. The overall revenue we're estimating is twenty-four million, three hundred twenty-three thousand, seven hundred seventy dollars. This leaves a gap of about one point nine million between the projected revenues and expenditures. This gap can be closed using appropriated fund balance, using reserves for budgetary reductions, or a combination of these items. Since we did use zero-based budgeting, there was no appropriated fund balance included, that were built into the budget talks, that thirteen fourteen gas line. Our latest fund balance projections show the appropriated fund balance at about one point nine million, the unrestricted fund balance at one point one million. The balance in our reserve account are as follows. Unemployment insurance reserve, seven hundred three thousand dollars, retirement contribution reserve, five hundred eighty thousand dollars, employee benefits accrued liability reserve, five hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, capital reserve, four hundred two thousand dollars, and repair reserve of one hundred forty-three thousand. School aid specialists reviewed our tax gap calculation last week, based upon what was known up to that point. Our tax levy limit shows an increase of one point oh nine percent, while our maximum levy after exemptions is at a three point oh two percent increase. Our proposed tax levy has to be reported to the office of state controller by March first. They also want us to report if we plan on overriding the tax gap. So unless you oppose, I will report the two percent increase we used in the revenue budget, this time with no plan on overriding the tax gap.
Just a couple of additional things in regards to budgets before I, my report. We will have for all of the budget work sessions, all the material projectable and having the board has a whole packet right now, hopefully to get that all that will be also ready. And also, the fact that it is a draft, it is draft one, we continue to work on the budget, we'll continue to work on it as we move closer to our first work session, and be a work in progress. The budget itself, just wanna make sure that everybody's aware that in this draft of the budget, the following are major reductions that are included in this draft. There are two elementary positions, which are retirements, there's one junior high school position, retirement, there is a point five special ed teacher, which is a retirement, and there's one clerical position that is a position that is left unfilled, and there's a one-part-time, point six gifted and talented teacher, that's a reduction in this budget, as well as conferences have been reduced, field trips, and of course supplies included. So those are the major reductions for the board to look at and consider in draft one. And we also have these assets, areas of consideration, let's just read through those as your own. I think we will review those as we go through the key items that we will need to correct these if I'm wrong. For the March eighth date, and our first budget work session, is that in your packet we have recommendations for purchasing buses, we heard about the capital project tonight, that we will be having to make decisions on those, specifically those two areas, for that first budget work session, because we need to get the legal notices done and prepared in time.
So you can approve that March eighth?
So you can approve those as of March nineteenth, and we'll need some time to work the legal council to get those with us. Those are two important pieces for the March eighth meeting, is we will have to decide and act on, choose to act on, the capital project, and also act on this tech board's recommendation in regards to purchasing a bus. Those are my pledges.
Regarding the buses, can we see some additional information around mileage utilization of the issue of buses, similar options around maybe using, we allow two of the minivans or things like that? Every day I pass a, there's more buses from somewhere down the freeway, but we probably operate a minivan or something like that, which is a cost.
Sure, we, I mean, something to talk about in those cases, in that case, maybe what I'll do is try to have the second floor come to our March meeting, so she can talk to you a little bit about some of those, the man that they were talking about is, with students with handicap conditions, and we checked that she definitely used a van, but it's not conducive to transporting those individuals. So, but we will, we will do that, yes, not a problem.
She brings some data around utilization of the buses?
We have. Sure, yeah, taken, yes.
Can we also include the consideration of preparing these, I didn't see any information about the cost as an alternative?
We have, we've increased the budget too, from, I believe, we've increased the repair budget, in the transportation department, substantially in the first draft of the budget, in order to work out, because we're anticipating more repairs because of the special.
Does she have a program for repair versus replace cost?
Correct.
Are we gonna look at the utilization of the buses to see why, and keep that spare for sports and stuff?
Keep back, I'm sorry.
Spare reserve standpoint?
Sure, and again, we look at that, and they look at that every year in regards to the number of buses we use, and what we have in order to get buses out, and the answer to those kinds of things. The number of spares, backups have decreased, the number of buses out now because we missed that one year of replacement, where downtime is a little longer than before in the past. We'll have a look at all that, give you some information. Hopefully we can get that the next couple of weeks, and then right after the break, and get some announcing, so we have, have it spoken before.
I wanna talk a little bit about the budget deficit that's projected here. We're projecting a one point nine million dollar budget deficit for next year. I recall back in the fall, this number was around one seven, we had different numbers. The real concern was, the year after that, it was around three million, and even bigger the year after that. So already, this number's going up, so I'm anticipating the trend will probably be similar to those other numbers, so we probably, well, three million the year after, or even more the year after that. Where I'm going with this is, I'd like to see some forecasts for the next, let's call it, three years, of where we think those gaps are gonna be again. I know we did the first one, but it was good to have, so that's helpful. The second thing, this is an ongoing structural gap that's just a huge problem, and we need to start getting at that, because all the reserves aren't good to have, basically using pretty much all at one time, and then the following year, we're gonna have a three million-plus hole, no way of getting out of it. I think that's my concern, because the year after next, a one-time shot at trying to press the three billion dollar gap is just gonna be this long. So my proposal, what I'd love to see is, for the two million to come back with choices to get to this two million dollar gap, how would you get there, and what would be your priorities on that two million dollar gap?
You have in your packet, five, there's five different scenarios there for you to look at, and you put in your packet for two million dollars. So you can look at that. Those are starting points, and personally, then we'll need some direction from the board as to where, because we need a plan for that one point nine million dollar appropriate fund out.
Let me finish what I was asking. This is a revenue versus expenditure deficit, and that's true. So what I'm asking for is, to close the gap between the revenue and expenditures on a spending basis, how would we close that, and how would be your priorities to get two billion dollars? What choice would you make? A recommendation would you make? A priority would you give those? So we have some ideas on things that are possible, besides just taking a one-shot shot of money to close a gap.
Again, my hope was that certainly on the A, that the board would give us some direction as to where they wanted to be, and that's why we gave you the scenarios that we'd asked for earlier, in regards to using, wanna reduce the shortfall by the one point nine, and the amount we have to cover that in one point nine million dollar appropriate fund out, we're gonna reduce that by the complete one point nine, we wanna reduce that by one million dollars? We don't show that.
We don't, until we see the operational information for that. So I'm asking if we could translate that?
So you're inviting to translate it into cutting the one point nine?
If you have to get there, what are your choices you have to make? What priorities, what are the implications? And because the year after next, we don't have a, we don't have a slug of money to book a gap, so we have to start returning for that now, and I'm very concerned about that. So I just wanna have a starting point, of what are the possibilities, what options are there?
Now, we can include some revenue options as well, correction, such as charging for housing building.
Yeah, you can, I don't think it's gonna contribute that much to it, but yeah, that's a lot. But how would you get it, just on a revenue expenditure basis, that's fine.
Okay, and that, that's, we can certainly, we can certainly look at that, and we'll look at the entire one point nine, and give you a list of, make up that one point nine.
So you're saying rather than, rather than identify upfront, what portion of fund balance can you do that?
Because when ultimately, after the side, it's gonna be a combination of all those things, so it's nice to see what's, what all the options are at one time, instead of just, you know.
And once that fund balance is stopped, it's a one-year shot.
It's going, I know.
And then figure it down the road, for your, one year.
And you have, and ultimately, you have, you know, you have, again, you have scenarios, and I think that's what Kristin was asking, is, do we look at, you know, what, do you have the cut, or what the number is, and then we can certainly come back with a priority list? If we look at one point nine, there's, it's gonna be substantial, there will be some drastic cuts in across the board's history.
But that's not, this is my concern, and I don't think we wanna fixate it as just one year, because if I'm reading this correctly, it looks like revenue for the next three, four years into the future is basically stake, it's gonna be about twenty-four million dollars. At the meantime, costs are gonna continue to grow, and that's why this gap is gonna increase every year. So this year, the gap is one point nine, next year is three million, I'm looking at these numbers from December, the year after that is maybe three point three or three point four, the year after that is four million. So this is a, this is a long-term problem that I think we need to look at strategically, and not just focus on this one year, we gotta look at the next three, four years, and make decisions going forward. I know also that the last couple of classes coming into kindergarten are less than a hundred kids, so I think we need to consider all of that, look at the whole district, and make hard decisions about planning for the future, and keeping all these financial constraints in mind, instead of just this one-year.
I think, no, I agree with you, and I think the big thing is that we need to keep the entire picture, as Lisa said, focused on the net revenues. It's also the board, the board can also decide to raise the tax levy by more than two percent, it can be three, it can be five, it could be ten. That also is a discussion that the board has to have in regards to where they wanna go. So, I mean, that's where my piece of that is, is as we begin to plan the future, what revenue do we wanna include in there, and some of that has to be a board decision, we can look at additional costs, and make recommendations to charging for building, and building use, and all those kinds of things, which we certainly will do in an attempt to reduce that one point nine, but we won't be able to fixate on an exact number, because ultimately, it's a board's purview to say that it's two percent, or it's three percent, with a fifty percent for simple majority, or it's five percent, or six percent, with a sixty percent majority, in regards to taxes. The board has to set some of those parameters for us, as to where they wanna go. So we're gonna stick solidly with two percent, over the course of the, we know that tax gap's not going away, we're gonna stick solidly with two percent, or we wanna estimate, you know, using, making it three, making it four, making it whatever down the road, so we also have to look at the revenue piece.
We can look at that, yeah, but this is the one area we don't have a deal of, is what are the informations of?
We can certainly reduce this budget graph for our base by one point nine million dollars.
And we need, when you explain that to us, we need to see the operational impact on positions or staff, or something, that's what the numbers align, because that doesn't mean anything, we need to know what it's gonna impact as far as students.
Okay, one other right here on my agenda, navigating conditions for potential board numbers will be available in my office on March first. will be available in my office on March 1st. Petitions, the expired terms of Andy Breyer and Geth Howard. Erie County Association's school boards is bound through the workshop for any prospective school board members on Saturday, March 31st, from 8:30 to 12:30.
Sounds good. I just have a few things. One, first one being New York City's school boards, the board's, I have two, for work on leadership development training, one for Pat Howard, and one for some people. Thank you very much. Erie County School Boards, the Erie County School Boards held its legislative breakfast on Saturday, and the legislators spoke very candidly, I think, from, from past years. Some areas that they are working on with regards to the governor's budget is that they're working on pension reform, it looks like there will be some type of pension reform, which is long-term, hopefully for a budget. They are also concerned in looking at the cost shift that the governor is recommending from preschool, special ed, from counties to the school districts. They're looking at, they're concerned that that's just helping to shifting burden to different local taxpayers. Concern about the high cost of each district is, we'll have covering new APPR, to implement the new APPR plan, we talked about the new accountability system that we're working on, working through, and planning for, and spending time developing. The administrators and I were in a mandatory training session today in the community, looking at the new part of the APPR. The legislators were very concerned about the unfunded mandate that comes with that. An example of that is that the cost to use will be between $60,000 and $100,000 implementing the new APPR. And that's not abnormal, in all districts, the cost of.
Still, those are costly.
Training, new assessments, we will have to be purchasing third-party assessments to assess our kids, so that we can come up with a number for APPR. So most of that cost, we have to, we will have to come up with seven third-party assessments. Purchases from all that, in order to make the, to acquire something. So that's, that's what the majority has said as well, is the correcting, we will always correct those assessments in-house in teams. We now are going to have point-of-use for all the 38 and most of the region's exams, regional scoring, which is anywhere from $6,000 to $9,000 per exam. They also, some, some positive side, they also talked about that they feel they have a commitment to reallocate $200 million, $250 million that the governor has set aside for grants, part of the $804 million that the governor committed to education, $204 million of that was set aside for competitive grants, of which there isn't a split, district in the state of New York is eligible to apply for them because of the criteria. So the legislature feels that they have a commitment to take $200 million of that and put into the A-driven, or now it's called formula-driven A, which means it's a little bit more of a rest inside in regards to A for next year. And they also are committed to an on-time, on-time budget. Again, this would certainly help us, I should have that information sooner.
Thinking clear as opposed to?
Yes. And then lastly, I just would like to congratulate Mr. Shaper, Mr. Chau, who was the top school for being selected to receive the Western New York Service Council Award of Excellence this year. Congratulations.
And that's all, thank you.
Anybody else have anything? All right, one thing, I did send this out to you over the weekend. I had asked, I know we had some discussions around some of the scheduling areas presented last time. One of the benefits of working with Harris Beach is they have on staff a partnership with Moonsville, Howard Smith, who's available for consulting projects. And I asked Howard to put together a proposal for us on what would cost, and what the approach would be for him to come in with an independent review of our current scheduling process for the junior and senior high school, where how it works, what works, compared to some of our performances, some of those kinds of issues. So I did send this out to everybody, so you should have a chance of taking a look at it. Basically, we'd like to study it and start pretty soon, and we include a number of interviews of administrators, teachers, parents, students, some survey work, a lot of data analysis, and a few other things, including a report and a presentation if requested. Total cost for the study is $6,500, and we're going to be done before June 30th, and then depending on how much of that would then give another year to look at any alternative alternatives, if that's pointed out, that would be a benefit to the study. So anybody have any questions about that?
I'm so confused to lie before you look at this. You explained why, however, you've been entertaining, $6,500 is a lot of money at this time, we haven't really discussed it, but it's.
A couple reasons, several reasons, actually. I've been approached by a number of teachers and parents concerned about the current schedule and the entrance it has on students' performance and their ability to work together and teach. Also, we had a drop in our relative performance of other districts over the last several years. So for example, business first, we used to be number four 10 years ago or so, now we're 22, 23, something like that. So I think it's worth looking at. We had this before, correct? Before what? Before what we had, we had now, we had this in the past. We did, yes. It worked out, it obviously did work out. We're switched to where we are now. I don't know, that's what the study is to help us figure out.
You know, as the way we looked at it last May, I think we had some information about the school districts and what they've done. I would rather see that spent $6,500, just to get an idea. You want $6,500 bucks out of it.
Well, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a waste of money at all. I think it's very important for us to understand the scheduling issue.
I think it might be relevant to this study, to this discussion of budgeting, because my understanding is, one of the reasons that Lake Shore went from black to traditional was as a cost savings measure. And from what I read here, you're going to look at costs of one versus the other. And as we look forward and look at these long-term decisions, strategic decisions, I think it's, you know, in certain areas, it's good to have expertise where we can get it. We're making big decisions and dealing with millions of dollars, so the price to gain expertise to assist us in making those decisions would seem like a wise investment in certain cases.
Well, the verification cost is not a factor of the big cost of relative scheduling systems. This is simply to evaluate performance historical and issues with the current schedule to see if it's a kind of a simple way to do.
I would agree that Brian paying $6,500 at a time now when you're asking everybody else their cost is ridiculous. I look at the administration we have, the management we have, it's a fine job putting a budget together. Budgets have been accepted by the public over the years. I guess I look more towards problems with the board, that the board is demanding the decent administrators, the teachers, the staff, to put aside their jobs to come up with things across different studies and things like that. That we should let the board go out of the way they have in the past, that's what budget should be for. And to get to pay $6,500 for that is ridiculous.
We have, we have the teachers, we have the administrators, we have Mr. Bugs, we have Mr. Massey, we have confidential secretaries that are running, because right now, a lot of uncertainty, a lot of uncertainty right now, it's protecting their contract. Are there any updates to these people?
Updates regarding what?
Their contract. There's contracts out there that are just.
What does this, what does that have to do with this? What's on the table right now?
Your people, your people come first. You take care of, you have to take care of your people around this district. It's probably, you guys, 95% of the people, 100% of the people in this district, 95% of them probably say they're eating life right now. I would. And who suffers in the end is the children. That's who we have to focus on. We're not focused on that. We're focused on numbers, we're focused on agendas, whatever the case may be, that's what we're focused on right now. It's unfair, we have a great district, we have terrific employees in this district. Talk about management. Right now, this district will manage on its own, it's supported, the leadership on its own. And, you know, there was a comment in the, in the handbook of sun of what to manage, to exert control, that's micromanage, and that's what's happening in this district. They need to stop, it's destroying the district right now.
We talked about being number four so many years ago, and now we're 22nd, 23rd. I disagree with those numbers, and I look at one of the goals that we had, or that this board came up with, was to be in the top 10. Mr. Graff, last month, gave us some part where he's already up to number eight, and then we spoke congratulations to him, knowing nothing. I think the system in the presentation he gave last year, the majority of the teachers and the staff were for what we have now, what we've accepted. Just because you don't accept that, or a puke, and you say your parents, teachers, who are they? I know the statistics came out that they were for it, but, you know, why come up and spend this head money to something?
Because statistics came out that were for it, Matt.
Ask Mr. Graff, and look at the notes that he brought up, the majority of the teachers were for the scheduling that we are present again, we did not want to change, there were a minority that wanted to go to change.
And half the participants, half the people did not participate for some reason or another, Matt.
It was a microphone, could you use that for me, Steve?
And in that study, almost half the people did not participate. That should be a red flag in itself.
Not necessarily. If they were against it, then I would say that they would have, if they would have participated.
Okay, so how does that factor in the calculation?
Well, you brought it up, you're the one saying that half of them didn't. You look at it one way, you look at black, I look at white. I think we have a good staff, I think we have good administrators, we have good teachers. I think that they spoke, and because you didn't like what they said, we want to come up with somebody else to do the dirty work, and that's all I've seen in the last year.
I think we all agree that we have good administrators and good teachers, and that's not a bone of contention here at all. All of us are here as volunteers, trying to do good work. Brian, I take exception to your comments tonight. Your MO seems to be that you take no real interest in working with board members. You've never called me, never communicated with me. You wait until a public meeting, and then prefer to grandstand and make speeches, and that doesn't show to me that you're truly interested and have good intentions in trying to make this district better.
I'm still behind you.
And the grandstanding is what we've learned from, from present board members for the last year, that that's what it takes, when everything has always been. Let's, let's put everything out on the table beforehand. When there's a meeting, tell us what your problems are beforehand, so we can be prepared. That people come to this meeting and come up with something off the wall that we're supposed to vote on, with no facts, with nothing. And that's what this board has turned into, it hasn't turned into a cohesive unit, it's gone downhill.
It doesn't have to be a cohesive unit to be, sometimes democracy is the way it works.
Keep in mind that it's board corporate. Board corporate is what? That is a board that makes decisions, not four people that listen to one person involved that way.
Debate can be healthy, and it can be a good thing, it's part of the process, if you're putting forward competing ideas. You guys are not putting forward competing ideas, you're just trying to roadblock and impose everything.
But does it matter, does it matter if we impose anything? It's always four to two anyway. So it makes no difference. You have them, you have them to say.
I think about that. I think there's some ideas, you know, if you have some ideas, bring them to the table.
As far as your comment that I have never contacted you, or you've never contacted me, never contacted Pat, who we do to work as a team. So the whole, you know, you mentioned that there's open transparency, openness and transparency within the board. That's not correct, that's not true. The term of engagement for the lawyer, it says any correspondence that Mr. Bugs has to, if he talks to the lawyer, any correspondence has to be either email or mail, and it has to go through the president first. Now, what kind of openness?
It's not say it has to go through the president, or it doesn't.
Yes, it does, absolutely does.
It does, that's not for our talking.
This is discussion, that's what the polls when it came out in the justice. And it's like, you come out and stuff like that, you want ideas. Tonight, you all told me that you did not review the bills, but you voted them to pass them. I brought up this thing, wanted to come out to four to two, to pass.
I said, I did not review the pad.
You thought I liked to manage, the king of like to manage it.
All right, we're getting nowhere with that, so.
Well, okay, that is an idea. And the president want to hear it. I know you pass it on, and you want to call for voting, ignore what I say, what Brian says. Go ahead.
I will.
I know you will, that's what you've done.
Does anybody have any actual questions about the content of what we're looking at this proposal?
Steve, I just have a couple of that. And only, because I sent, I did respond to your email, I sent it out, and I want to make sure that I, I get that out, and it's certainly, I think everybody, based on, you know, my email, where I stand in the character of the situation, but I just want to make sure that, you know, that we move forward with this, that we specifically state the purpose of the study. Why are we looking, why are we looking to change? Why are we looking to change?
It is, it's clear, but it's not that we look to change, it's a look to see if there's a need to. Right? It's not proposing any new schedule or anything else, it's simply saying, give a number, here's me another schedule, if this still makes sense.
Okay, that's fine. The, will students, and again, Howard Smith probably will address this, but will students and parents have the ability to, for input, not just the select few that he suggests in his proposal? I'd like to be able to say and see that that's open to all and everyone, in some kind of interview process, or a survey process, or whatever we want, however he wants to make it up, but more than just, you know, individuals that we might select have an opportunity to participate in that.
Well, you'll get some of the parts that he's, he's talking about incorporating there. Some are willing interviews, so that would have to be smaller sample size. But he did talk about having a survey tool, so I'd imagine he has, they had up to a very large population.
See, should we, should we be getting three quotes? Is that, is that the district procedure, and this is not an exempt service? I know we've had multiple discussions and debates about that. It is $6,500, $6,500, and according to our guidelines for purchasing, anything for $5,000 to $10,000 requires three formal rate quotations. I throw that out, because that's what all of us here in the district live by each and every day. So I want to make sure, I guess I might ask the board if feel that necessary to follow that guideline.
We went through that last time, pointing to the lawyer, that is not an issue.
Whatever's in my, it wasn't.
Is your agreement that same question that we looked at?
Well, I think it was in regards to, yeah, the same question, and then we looked at it, it was in regards to the purchasing of legal services, that that was an exempt position. The board had the ability to appoint, and didn't have to go through a bidding process and all that kind of stuff. We're now, we're now looking to buy services from a law firm, or Howard Smith in particular, should we be getting our quotes, the guidelines, except for everybody else in the district. They, if the services cost, they can be $5,000 to $10,000, they have to come up with three formal quotations.
I think the answer would be the same, it wouldn't apply, it wasn't specific to legal services. But Harris Beach is one of our council, I mean, if there's any question.
But Howard Smith is not a council.
He's part of Harris Beach.
But Harris Beach, Harris Beach Solutions, not Harris Beach. So it's a, it's a solution-based consulting of Harris Beach. So again, all I'm asking is, is that I think he, when he was explaining it to us, when Ryan was explaining it to him, it had to do with the fact that legal was an exempt position. We did a point, we go to council, at whatever cost, you have to go through a bidding process and quotations and whatever, but we needed to follow the purchasing.
But we needed to follow the purchasing, or should be buying purchasing out, etc.
Wasn't that just set out?
I don't think it applies, but it's a big question, you approve it subject to approve by Ron and I, or Harris Beach?
I'm gonna make sure that that ultimately, that ultimately, then the last.
Just, thanks, is the same, same policy you referred to last time?
It's the same policy, but.
You referred to the last?
But it was the policy, but in addition to the policy Ron referred to, that you should be using and implementing any district procedures that we have in place. We have a district procedure in place, it spells out exactly what has to happen for every amount of purchase, purchases of supplies and of services. So from five hundred dollars to a thousand, it's X, or a thousand to five thousand, X, five thousand to ten thousand, X. So there's a guideline to do each one of those, I think that was the end of, I don't know if Ron's reading out correctly, because we should be following those, the guidelines that are supported with the district or anything, any other purchases indoors or services and legal council, something exempt.
When we run into, when you're dealing with kind of eight services, like these are logistics of their problems, even if it wasn't required, who else is providing the service in the area? Probably no one. And in May, Mayor Ju, you were talking about doing a staffing study that you presented to the board, and I think you presented one individual for three or four thousand dollars.
Right.
We did not approve it, but that would be the same situation, there was no.
And we also have, again, I'm sure you're there, I'm asking because we had the discussion and debate, we also have, again, on the docket, you're looking at, and I'm looking at cost, both with, with Howard Smith as well, as well as the Western Service Council right now, on doing a building usage study for our homeowners and homeowners who are planning in regards to how we utilize our three buildings, which is basically effectively going forward, and another cost savings there. So we, I already have been asked to get that quote, and we've got onto, the two, two groups, and I think I'll probably attempt to go to one more if I have to.
Why don't we look at the policy in the legal and policy committee, just to try to answer that question for future purposes? But for purposes of tonight, if there's any question, you could pass the subject to, have your question answered by one, either Harris Beach or Ron.
Well, Ron's our council plus the competition, I think that's the best to have.
Correct.
And we, our, this last year, we went through three processes.
We went through process, and I don't remember what the cost was, so we went through whatever in the process here, we gave a couple of calls, and it was less than the Service Council and the school board, who are still the same as.
All right, what would the harm be in paying three quotes if we get five or two other, out of the time, I mean, after, I mean, what would the harm, what would be the harm to go out and get three quotes, or two other quotes, or additional quotes, or find possibly two others? Can we investigate that, just to?
Certainly, the Western Air Service Council and, or they had a school board to prove this over the superduty, as well as several individuals in the area.
Maybe anything about Howard Smith, is that he was a superintendent of Loomisville and also a district attorney to the higher department, so he did that, has that he used some of his experiences from two of the districts that he's worked with.
High school districts, that's, that's the reason that it was nice to see that he developed, he was going to work. Are you, say, you'd like to, you'd like to have us go through this?
How long is the pay to get?
I'm not sure what else to do.
Is there any way to, with Area One?
Oh, yeah, we could certainly, I could certainly make a phone call, you know, in the next couple of days, you're going to find other people that are doing the work. Certainly, there's, there's some other school districts across the state of New York that there has, there has to be some others that are doing this kind of stuff.
And what was the school district, Lake Shore, that went from our way, we do our schedule to the traditional to day use lines? Go ahead, give me a second.
Yeah, and the last thing is to make sure that everybody sort of, you know, and doubtfully, as I said, I can advise you, and then the budget, as I tried it in for November twelfth school year, except for health and safety, she was like, they closed down, but all staff, so there are no, no one of us has the ability to spend anything of the health and safety fund after the end of the year, so we said our team can be looking at our exact funding.
Why does, why does that happen, what do you check on what?
To, so we can get a clearer picture of what exactly funding is. We're in the second semester now, so if I just had nothing used or purchased, most likely we don't, we don't need that. But things that are used ongoing, like salaries and those kinds are all income.
Isn't that what the OSC was, isn't that something the OSC is precise before that we?
No, they were closing down, no, that was the fact that we had closed down earlier in those two years back in, in November, and it closed down early, and that created the excess fund.
Same thing?
Well, right now, ultimately, we're looking at one point nine. We need to know whether that's, in order to give you a clear picture, we need to know whether it's one point nine, actually going to be one point nine, or it's going to be one point seven, or it's going to be two. So in order for us to make sure that we have a clear picture of what we're, what we are spending, have spent a big amount in the year, we can get, create that, usually, this is, this is just about a month earlier, normally, normally happens in March, or October.
All right, a question, sorry about that. We're going to have three similar folks for this, this proposal, we'll talk about that as we. Anybody else have anything?
I have one other thing. Back to the subject of supporting decisions and disagreeing with decisions. At the end of the day, after a lot of reporting, I cannot support decisions that come to the board. As a board member, I have to support those decisions, whether I like it or not. I cannot do that any longer, so as a tie, I am resigning.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything? All right, at this point, I make the motion to enter executive session to discuss ETA contract negotiations. Call in favor? Aye, opposed, abstentions, no. Thank you for attending.